Wonderful. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Before I call the meeting to order, I've had a request for a moment of silence in request to the Oilers losing last night. I hear they were on a winning streak. I haven't been following, but I think it's been seventeen games and... Yeah, so I know that there's quite a few fans and community members that are probably quite upset, so I feel for you. You're welcome. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. And I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands, a part of the traditional territories of the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings that they share of these lands and its people. I will now ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Does administration have any additions to the agenda this morning?
On your worship.
Okay, I believe there is the addition of a proclamation for Congenital Heart Disease Awareness Week. That will be 5.1 under Proclamations. I believe council has a copy of that on their desk. And any additions from council? Council Ballas?
Thank you. Under decision items, I would like to add SOS Media Letter of Commitment.
Okay, do we want to put that under decision or under council-initiated?
Decisions.
Decision? Sure, okay. So it will be 9.6? 9.6 SOS Letter of Support?
9.6 is what we've spoken for. Maybe we can go 9.5.5?
9.5.5?
Sure.
Sure. Remind me of that one. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with the two additions this morning? Council chair, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the January 24, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt those? Council Evans, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried, and that moves us to our addition this morning of our first proclamation, which is Congenital Heart Disease Awareness Week, which is February 7 to the 14 of 2024. Whereas congenital heart disease is the most common of all birth defects occurring in about one in every hundred births in Canada. Heart defects are present at birth and affect the structure of the heart and how blood flows throughout the heart and body. And whereas more than 50% of all children born with CHD will require at least one invasive surgery in their lifetime. And whereas survival of children with CHD has greatly improved thanks to advances in medical technology. But for some, CHD means lifelong cardiac care. And whereas with more patients reaching adulthood, continued efforts in fundraising and research is required to ensure access to ongoing care and support. Therefore, I, Nancy Dawes, Mayor of the town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim February 7 to February 14, 2024, as Congenital Heart Disease Awareness Week in the town of Drayton Valley, dated this day of February 7, 2024. Next up, we move into our delegations this morning. Our first is Ms. Louise Allchurch, 7.1, Métis District Number Eight. Good morning and welcome. Want to come on down to the podium?
Get it again.
Wonderful.
Well, good morning, and I want us, from our board and our Métis citizens, I want sending thank yous to Mayor Dawes and all the councillors here for everything that you're doing for us and assisting us through our many journeys that we're endeavoring. And I really appreciate everything, the kind words, the encouragement that we're getting from the town, the FCSS. And I really appreciate it. It comes from the heart that it really moves me that I'm not used to doing this kind of thing, so it's really nice that I've been welcomed twice into this chambers. I've never been in the chambers before. So I am very honored to be here representing the Métis citizens of Drayton Valley and Brazu County. So this is an invitation to all to our dance that is next weekend on the 17th. It is called a kitchen party. And I was just reminded by a gentleman here that I just met this morning, back when the kitchen party was where, was like, you should have a kitchen table here, because that's how everything was organized. It was, people would come together if there was a crisis. Everybody would move into somebody's house and have delegations going on. Or if there was a crisis going on, everybody pulled together and met. And it was also where everybody would bring their instruments, come around the kitchen party. The women would bring the meals, the children would play outside. And that was our gatherings back then with our Métis people. And I believe probably most of your ancestors did the same thing. So that's why this event that we're putting on, the Métis, we call it the Kitchen Party. So that everybody is welcome, and it doesn't matter as long as you're bringing your dancing shoes. That's the main requirement, and come and have a good time at this dance. And again, I want to thank the town and FCSS for supporting us. And any questions? Fire away.
Well, thank you very much for sharing that with us and joining us again this morning. What is the date and the time and location?
It is at the Omniplex Curling Rink Lounge. The doors open at 6:00, oh, well, the doors open at 5:30. Supper starts. We're going to have bannock and stew. And that's a tradition for the Métis people. And a good hearty stew starts everybody up and ready to dance. And so it's at, the doors open at 5:30, supper at 6, and then the dance to follow. We've got door prizes coming, not door prizes, but silent auction. And yeah, so it's at the, on the 17th.
On the 17th.
I found out that we have another event, which we didn't know about, was your Fire and Ice. We would have tried and got it together with that too, but we're having the dance on the 17th.
Is it the same as the Fire and Ice?
It's the next night.
Oh, it's the next night. Yeah. Yeah, it's hard now that things are back to normal and lots is happening around in the community. There sometimes seems to be a couple of events happening at the same time, but it's not to say that you can't go for a little bit to each event and make sure that you have a little visit. Are there any questions this morning for Ms. Louise? Well, we certainly appreciate you coming this morning, sharing that with us. We look forward to more things that the, that the club is doing and more events that you're going to be hosting. Do you have any plans kind of for 2024 of other things that you'll be bringing to the community and kind of educating and celebrating?
Well, with what this event is all about is getting funding to go forward with events. We're wanting to start organizing seniors events where, where we want gatherings and bringing in our culture with it for anybody. Like I said, we're community-oriented, so we want everybody to come out and find out what we're all about. Also, we're on the verge of starting to get more people outside the community that want to bring like their artisan work or teaching the beading and moccasins and all that kind of stuff. So we're looking at starting to get that all lined up. And down the road, there'll be probably more events like what, but we would love to be able to get involved with other organizations and maybe work together to enhance what they're doing. So that's one of our biggest goals, is try and get back into the community and that kind of stuff. So if anybody has got any ideas, I've got lots, but I'm just one person.
And Métis District Eight is hosting. How many, how many people are within District Eight?
Well, in, if you look at the town and the Brazu County, there's over 400 and counting of Métis people. And I always say, I always do this. I'm still the same person, even though I'm Métis. Your neighbor could be a Métis person. And that's like, we don't go out and, and...
So it's not like a committee? It's not like there's a...
Well, our committee is our district board.
Okay.
And that kind of stuff. And so we will be transitioning into a new government as soon as everything is settled in Ottawa. That's what's going on right now, as most people probably don't know. It was held up before Christmas with a committee going through everything because there is some disagreements between the First Nations and the Métis. And so it's gone now into, back into cabinet. And from there, it gets the third reading, and then from there, it goes into senate. And then we'll find out how this is all going to work. But we're still our local council. And then from there, we, they come back and we start our districts, which, which will be District Eight. You guys, the town of Drayton Valley will be in District Eight. So that's how that's going to work. And then our council goes forward to the district, and then there'll be a subcommittee underneath that will be looking after the funds that we've accumulated up until now to go into doing events with our district in here. But it's more, we're trying to keep the money here for this area and that. So there's a lot of stuff going on, as you said, with, with government. It's never easy. So bear with us. As soon as we know more, we will definitely keep you guys. That's why I'm here today is just, if you guys have questions, let me, then I can go back to our council and say, okay, this is what they want to know, but right now, that's all I know. That's all I can tell you is what they've been passing on to us.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That's helpful, for sure. Council Ballas?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and unfortunately, I'm not going to be here for the weekend, but I think it's an excellent idea. And I know the short time that we had in the past, it was well received. So thank you for continuing. My question, not question, a comment. Just wondering if you've ever been in contact with the Historical Society? And the grounds down at the museum, I think, would be an excellent place to do a promotion and education. It's a great area. It would attract, I think, a lot of people, and it would be maybe good for the museum and for both.
The person who has just stepped down, Pam Schwab, her and I, she and I are very good friends, and I'm going to miss her, but she was starting to pull that in because I sat a lot of tables with her talking about bringing the Métis culture in. And, and that's one of the things, like, that we've got, I've got some ideas that I'd like to put towards the museum council to see if we can get some, one of the part of the building and maybe start up like a trading post so that we could have all our cultural stuff there, like our pamphlets or knowledge for people to see, because I know it's not there. And Pam and I were working on that, trying to get that developed, and now she's gone. So now I got to go find to talk to another persons, but yes, I have talked to the museum, and I've made contact with tourism and hospitality already before. So we're working on it. It's, we're taking baby steps because we're not sure how this new government is going to be organized. But I still am going to be pushing everything I can for this area, because this is my home.
Perfect. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming this morning and sharing, and we look forward to the event on the weekend.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Take care.
Yep.
Next up, we have 7.2, Mr. Tom Schroeder, Drayton Valley Flying Cup Club delegation. Oh, he's not here? No? Okay, maybe we'll circle back if he ends up coming in the next little bit. What time did we, we did say nine? Okay. We'll kind of push past this, and if he shows up, then we'll circle back around. Okay, so then we'll jump to our decision items. First up is Mr. Tom Thompson, 9.1, Community Standards Bylaw Text Amendment, Unfit Structures, 2023, Third Reading. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, council. So I'm here this morning to talk about the Community Standards Bylaw Text Amendment. As council is aware, during the October 4, 2023 Regular Council meeting, administration was directed to prepare an amendment to the Community Standards Bylaw to include provisions for landowners being responsible for structures deemed unfit for human habitation. Administration worked with our legal department, and we then prepared the Community Standards Bylaw Text Amendment, Unfit Structures, 2023-02-P. On October 18, council unanimously passed first reading of the proposed bylaw. We then moved to November 15, in which council passed second reading of the proposed bylaw, and direction was given to administration to set up a meeting between council and the mobile home park owners. On January 15, 2024, council, along with the mobile home park owners, met, and they were able to discuss their concerns with council and steps moving forward. The proposed bylaw would amend the current Community Standards Bylaw as it pertains to structures deemed unfit for human habitation by Alberta Health Services or deemed unsafe by a safety codes officer. And that would include landowners, not just the owners of the structures, to be responsible to ensure the structures are either repaired, demolished, or removed. During the meeting on January 15, it was requested that more information be put into this report as it pertains to the process Alberta Health Services takes when deeming a property unfit for human habitation. The biggest concern was park owners did not want to be the individuals removing the occupants. Now, once, so that information has now been put into this, this back, background information. So once an executive order by Alberta, or sorry, once an executive officer by Alberta Health Services deems a property unfit for human habitation, the order that is issued directs the occupants to vacate the premises on or before the date, and that the owner immediately undertake and diligently pursue the completion of following work. So that could be, include things like boarding the property up or securing the property so the individuals are not able to return. The order is written to the owner and to the occupants. There is a joint responsibility for both to comply with the order. Now, if the tenants do not vacate after Alberta Health issues the orders, the owner has the ability to go through the residential tenancy process and the courts to receive an order from the court to have a bailiff come out and remove the occupants. That is one option. The other option is Alberta Health Services also has the ability to apply to the courts to have the individuals removed. However, if that's how the process goes, then it would be up to the owners to pay those costs. As this amendment is going to have the greatest impact on owners of lands with structures, they may not own such, sorry, lands with structures, they may not own such as mobile homes. Administration has reviewed the Mobile Homes Sites Tenancy Act with legal and believes that owners of mobile home parks would have legal avenues to pursue through the courts to rectify the situation. The town of Drayton Valley recommends that mobile home park owners seek independent legal advice on the most appropriate way to deal with structures on their property. We did also provide some background on some avenues and some options that they could pursue, but it's best that they pursue legal advice to make that happen. Further, it is important to note that once an order is issued, the person or corporation on the order has the ability to appeal the order to council within 14 days of receiving the order. Once an appeal is made under the Community Standards Bylaw, council may confirm, vary, or cancel the order. In addition, should the deadline approach for completion of the removal of the structure, there is also mechanisms in place to allow for extensions to be granted by resolution of council, which is outlined in the Community Standards Bylaw. Consequently, it is, or it is administration's recommendation that council give third and final reading to bylaw 2023-02-P as presented. That was the full notes version. There was a lot of detail in that, so I hit the highlights, so.
That's perfect. Thank you for that. Yeah, I looked at it. That was a long report, so good job. Any questions for Mr. Thompson this morning? There's no questions? Is there a member of council that would like to make the motion? Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yes, I will move that council give third and final reading to bylaw 2023-02-P as presented.
Thank you for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? There's none, then I'll call. All in favor? That is carried. Well, thank you very much for that. Moving along the agenda, next up is Ms. Alicia Tiffin, 9.2 Employee Wellness Program.
Good morning, Mayor and council. The town of Drayton Valley has been offering Employee Wellness Program since November 2003. This program is a fantastic benefit to employees and assists with attraction and retention strategies. Through numerous discussions amongst administration and review of Employee Wellness Program policy, administration identified areas that need clarifying to better manage the program and provide insight for eligibility and expectations. Highlights included in the proposed amended Employee Wellness Program policy include clarifying when employees become eligible to participate in the program, definitions for who is eligible for the program, including active employee and dependents, and also changes outlining the town's right to revoke access to employees' membership through the Employee Wellness Program if policies, policy and procedures are not being followed. Administration recommends that council approve and adopt the Employee Wellness Program Policy 8-01-12 as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Go ahead, Deputy Clark?
So I think I may have asked this question before, but I can't remember the answer. So this Employee Wellness Program is mirrored at the county, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so when there's a county person who maybe breaks some of these rules, how is that communicated? And does the county have something that mirrors this exactly in terms of qualifying and all that sort of stuff?
So what we do is communicate our policy to them. We also have our facilities conduct policy that aligns behavior accepted within our facilities. So that includes our aquatic center, the Omniplex, any of our facilities, even the town center. So we have procedures and policies that we follow when it comes to conduct breach, I guess that's the right word, within our facilities. So we have established procedures that we'd follow whenever, you know, if we have a person who's, for example, harassing our workers, that we would follow. And then communicate as a user, and we'd have to work alongside with the county for communication beyond that.
Do they get a copy of our policy?
Yes, I would share it once it's passed to administrator for the county.
Councilor Gamanah? His finger was quicker.
Thank you, and thank you for presenting this. Just wondering, the existing policy and the one that's presented, what kind of changes, if any, or is it just the same?
Sure. The only changes that were made within this policy were adding the definitions for what is considered an active employee and what is considered a dependent within our policy. And there's a phrase in there about revoking membership if policies and procedures weren't followed. Other than that, the policy is identical to the one prior.
Right. Thank you.
Council Ballas?
Thank you. Under definitions, when you say active employee, you mentioned only the town of Drayton Valley and the county of Brazu, but you're not including the RCMP or their administration, RCMP administration or their members. Should that not be under active employees?
Sure. This, this policy is twofold. One, to identify how we as an employer manage the program and also who else is included. So yes, I could include that definition as the RCMP. Typically, if they're not active members, they don't reside within the community and wouldn't revoke, but I could definitely update that. But active employee was more for town and county staff as that's under our purview.
Yeah, it just, when we're talking about definitions, it just seems like to me it should be included in the definitions, otherwise it's pretty loose, in my opinion.
I can provide a little clarity to that, if I may. So RCMP are not town employees. But we do have town employees at the RCMP building, and they would be eligible for this. So I don't, is the RCMP eligible under this?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so that we should probably adjust that.
Yeah.
So I guess there would be a request to adjust the definition here, then? Would that need to be captured in the motion? Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Thank you very much.
Before you do make your motion, Council Evans, if you could include in your motion to amend the policy to include RCMP members, that would, that would save us another report.
Perfect. Thank you.
I guess just one comment quick first.
Sure.
I find it pretty interesting that active employees cannot be dead. I had to laugh when I saw that. Anyway, I'll go on with my motion that, that council approve and adopt the Employee Wellness Program Policy 8-01-12 with the amendment to include RCMP members. Good enough?
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate? I was just reading the active employees part. If there's no comment, question, debate, the motion is on the table with the addition of amending the definition there to include the RCMP. I will call. All in favor? That is carried.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Wonderful, thank you. Moving on to nine point three, Ms. Shelley Terry, Utility Bylaw Amendment twenty twenty four one E. Another sad member of our administration about the Oilers team this morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. In twenty twenty three, administration brought forward an amendment to the utility bylaw, which was heavily driven by the fact that the town did not have any means to enforce the bylaw. Administration added fines and penalties sections of the bylaw so that we could start enforcing infractions of the bylaw. It was approved by council on August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty three. In two thousand and twenty four, we had our first enforceable action take place, and unfortunately, the wording in section four point one of the bylaw prevented us from issuing a fine for tampering with the water meter as stated, no person shall, in the bylaw. Without having sufficient proof of exactly who tampered with the meter, this prevented us from having the ability to issue a fine. So the proposal is that administration has amended the current utility bylaw for council consideration with the following changes. Changed formatting of bylaw to remove bullet points to make referring to the bylaw more clear. Add where fines are applicable under each section. Add additional verbiage to be able to place fines on utility count holders if getting a confession is not possible. We added a reference to the Community Standard Bylaw for water restriction fines and penalties. And changed information to the water restriction section based off the policy that I'll be presenting next. Changed section numbers in the fines and penalty schedules to reflect formatting changes. So next step is for administration to bring utility bylaw back for second and third reading, and our recommendation is that council give first reading to bylaw two zero two three, twenty twenty three zero one E as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Terry this morning? Councilor Evans?
Just a couple of little things, Shelley, mostly textual stuff. On page forty-four, we have no person shall haul wastewater from a domestic source that, number four, states does not contain commercial or industrial wastewater. I think it should be contains. So we're saying no person shall haul wastewater from a domestic source that should read contains commercial or industrial wastewater. You kind of went against, went against yourself there. This is a little nitpicky, but forty-six, there's some formatting issues there about halfway through. We got a couple of indents and stuff. And lastly, my favorite, on page forty-seven, "The town may at such times and for such length of time as considered necessary or advisable regulate, restrict, or prohibit sprinklering." Sprinklering is an interesting word, but it's not really a word. So I guess the use of a sprinkler maybe, or something like that.
So we thought the same exact thing, and we looked at other municipalities, and that is the word they use. So we obviously used it too, but it doesn't show in the definitions as a definition. But it is what municipalities use as the wording for.
I couldn't find a definition for it.
I know, neither could I. Trust me, we looked at that.
It's an interesting word.
Yeah.
Adding it to my list?
Yeah, yeah. Nancy's new Webster's Dictionary. Anyway, those were just the three little things that popped out at me when I was reading this for entertainment before the meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions for administration? So with this one, again, that there would be, if you're wanting to make a motion for giving first reading, it would be with the amendments to the wording in the bylaw. Is that correct, Mr. Ferris?
If the, just on the, on the one, I think what I heard was that sprinkling will be suggested to stay.
Yeah.
We can change it if you wish, but.
The other couple?
So yes, amended wording on section two, subsection four.
Section two and subsection four?
Yeah. Well, yeah, what you're looking at on the formatting stuff is, is probably just an adjustment through track changes using, using word.
That's exactly what the problem was, is we tried to get the formatting to fix, but with tracking the changes, it prevented us from making those changes. So once we actually formatted and get rid of the red lines, it will correct it.
Yeah, I apologize for being so nitpicky. That used to drive me crazy too, but it was there, so I thought I'd mention it to you.
Do you want to make the motion for us, Councilor Evans?
Sure.
With your amendments?
I will make the motion that council give first reading to bylaw twenty twenty three dash zero one dash E with the suggested amendment to, oh, what was it? Section?
Two?
Section two point five.
Section two.
Subsection two dash four. As requested.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Go ahead, Deputy Clark.
So we have first reading, and second and third can't go today, correct? Or no? They can, if council so wishes. Council does have the authority to do all three readings at once. It is suggested through, through the MGA and a best practice that you do first reading and come back to council and do second, third at the next meeting. Okay, the only reason I ask is it seems like there's just a couple of additions here, and they're not really major. I don't know if it makes sense to do one, two, and three now, or just curious as to what everybody's thoughts are. I, I think part of the rationale for the first reading and then a delay for second and third is to allow, like in this case, we don't have a public hearing on, on, on this bylaw, is to allow for any public input.
Okay, there is a motion on the table. If there's no other questions for administration, then I'll call motion. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Next up, I guess you're here for nine point four as well, which is the Water Restriction Policy T dash zero one dash two four.
Thank you. In December two thousand and twenty-three, a letter was sent from the government of Alberta regarding the current provincial drought. It is currently at a stage four out of, out of five staged, out of a five, five-stage provincial system in many, in many parts of the province. The letter directed that we work towards planning and preparedness for the drought continuation this coming summer. Proposal is this water restriction policy is one of the first steps in ensuring our water utility has a set of guidelines going forward to educate the residents and regulate outdoor water consumption throughout the drought. The policy lays out plans for the different stages of water restrictions, which will ultimately be decided by council based on the utility capabilities, variable scenarios, and provincial requirements and recommendation. The policy directs residents to limit outdoor water use and adopts the odd and even water schedule used by many other communities. This policy also addresses commercial and industrial use requiring consumption of high-volume consumers such as car washes and bulk water cellars to limit their hours. A plan for limiting some municipal services is included in the policy to demonstrate to the community that the town is not requiring something from residents, that it does not adhere to itself. Stakeholder and communication strategies. Once policy is adopted, we will advertise to the public via social media, newspaper, radio, educating residents about water conservation and expectations. And the next steps, administration will start drafting the communication strategy on how to educate the public on water conservation and water restrictions. Recommendation is that council approves the water restriction policy T dash zero one dash twenty four as presented.
Thank you very much for that, Deputy Clark.
Yeah, a couple of questions around the communications. So when we look at the utility bylaw amendment, this would be three point two C subsection nine, one through six. We talk about communication and how we're doing that. So when we look at the water restriction policy, they're not, they're not the same. The verbiage isn't the same, and I'm assuming they should be the same. In one here, for instance, it says, "The town shall send a non-broadcast intrusive alert through Alberta Emergency Alert." And then it says in here, "A non-broadcast intrusive alert can be issued." So one's saying we're gonna do it, and the other one's saying we may do it, right? And then the other thing I would suggest is maybe just having it in, in one of them, so you're only referencing it once, and you're not, so if you change one, you don't have to change both, I guess is what I'm saying. Does that make sense? Thank you, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Clark. What? You're referring to the utility bylaw? Yeah, so when you look at the utility bylaw amendment nine point three, under section, or sorry, under section three point two C, use of water, and you go down to that subsection nine, IX.
What page is that?
Forty-seven.
And I thought I should do the water restriction first, and then the bylaw second, and she's got anything there, but.
Yeah. Yeah, so they just don't match, right?
Yeah.
And again, the other thing is maybe just reference the water, or water restriction policy, and then you don't have to change that in the future if you change one or the other, right?
Yeah.
So the amendment would be to the water policy?
Yeah, so, I mean, they do reference in that subsection eight, as, you know, and other outdoor water use as applied in the water restriction policy, so you've already referenced it, right? You know, that section or subsection nine could just also reference the water restriction policy again. And then you don't have to worry about whether or not they're the same.
Yeah.
Makes sense?
So where would the amendment be on?
So it's amend one or the other. So it's either you amend the, the utility bylaw, or you, well, you probably have to amend both to make sure they match to begin with, and it's what you want, and then they both have to be changed.
So in the motion, can we go back and amend? Have the motion on here to amend the water or the utility bylaw as well, or do we have to go back to the?
No, you don't have to go back for that. It was first reading, so.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll have those changes made for the next meeting in second, third readings.
Okay, so again, for the council that's making the motion, you'll want to include the amendments to the, the bylaw. Councilor Ballas?
Thank you. You'd mentioned that the province is under stage four right now.
Correct.
So does that mean that we are also in stage four?
It wouldn't, no. No, every municipality is scenario-based, right? We pull from a river. So you'd want to build a procedure for, in your municipality based off your conditions. As the province isn't a four, they're not in, in the five yet. So some places, they are actually pinning, saying that you need to restrict, you need to restrict. We are not one of those yet. But if, if they did, then we'd start enforcing this, this water restriction. So right now, yes, the province is in the stage four drought, but it's not impacting our municipality directly.
So Drayton Valley is not in a stage four?
Correct.
And how is that communicated? Do they specify specific areas that are in stage four?
They, they would have reached out, so Environment would reach out to each of those municipalities that are currently experiencing issues due to the drought, if, if anybody is at this point saying that we need to amend water licenses, do this. So it'd be Environment contacting us to, to make those changes, and then we would notify.
Well, I'm just looking at the commercial structure because it restricts them to certain hours if they're in stage four. So I.
If we're in a stage four.
Right. So my question, yeah, you, what you answered is that although the province is in stage four, it's restricted areas.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Clark?
So I guess with that line of thinking, if the province says to us, you're doing this, if we look under responsibilities, it says the CAO is going to be the final decision maker in determining what stage of residential water restrictions are imposed, so the province also does that, do they not? They say to the CAO or designate, this is what you're doing.
They will do.
So I guess the CAO doesn't necessarily have the latitude to determine the final outcome, right?
Correct, yeah. The province would set some limits on us, and, and the CAO would call our water restriction, but, yeah.
So does, do the responsibilities need to change then to reflect that, or?
It does state in the water restriction for, unless it's like emergency base.
Yeah.
So that, our authority then is revoked. It's the province's authority that takes over.
Yeah, I get that, but so if the province comes and says to you, hey, we got a water restriction in place, or you must put one in place, are you automatically declared in a soul, a state of local emergency? I guess, because that's what that's saying, right, is unless there's a state of local emergency, the CAO has a final say over what level of water restrictions we have. So I think I understand your question. So the, the province would, would contact the town and say, okay, you guys, you have a water restriction policy? If so, you need to implement it, right? And they'd probably ask to review it as well. So that's, that, that it would be the higher level authority. We may be in a situation that is unique to, to the town and not the province, where, where the river changes and all of a sudden our pump is sitting on a sandbar, and, and, you know, we need other approvals to, to move that, or whatever it may be. It gives the town the authority to implement the policy. That answer? Yeah, I get that, I get that, but I guess what I'm saying, though, is the, the reference to soul isn't necessarily accurate, I don't think. Right, so it could be a ministerial order, right? It could be, you know, any number of things could come from the Alberta Environment, or it could come from DFO, I don't know where it comes from, but state of local emergency is pretty, I don't know. It, it just seems that it's very specific here, and I think there's a whole bunch of different scenarios with which the town would have some water restrictions imposed on it, right?
Absolutely.
Would that not be true to all of our policies, though? If, if a state of emergency is being declared, then we don't really, there, I don't want to say they're out the window, but the province isn't in control, right? So with everything, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get that. In a state of a local emergency, we would activate our emergency plan and our emergency team. Whether or not the province jumps in and takes control or not would be dependent on, on the issue. So the soul could still stand, and we would be on our own to, to manage it.
I'm just saying that what's written in any of our policies could change dependent on the situation, right, once a provincial soul has been declared. So I don't know if changing, if that's what you're asking, Deputy Clark? I don't know if changing this one, or we'd have to include it in all of our policies then, or bylaws?
I, I'm just struggling with the fact that it says the CAO will be the final decision maker in determining what stage of residential water restrictions are imposed, period. I mean, regardless of soul, I don't think that's accurate, because the province could come in and say, this is what you're doing, right? He can't supersede what the, what the province is saying, right?
I guess what I'm seeing is then, if we change it here, we would have to change it in every policy, because no matter what policy we're dealing with, the province would have the say if we declared a provincial, local, or provincial state of emergency, so is, get what I'm saying?
I, I do. I think what that probably should say is unless a provincial emergency is declared.
Not local, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a fan of using authority with having jurisdiction or something of that nature, right? Because it could be federal too, potentially.
Yeah.
So would we have to put that, change that in all of our policies?
We can definitely address it in this one. This is a brand-new policy we don't have, so.
I don't know. Tell me if I'm off-base here, but that's kind of how I'm seeing it, is the CAO doesn't have final say in all instances, I guess is what I'm saying. So it's not an accurate, it's not an accurate description of a responsibility there. No, CAO does not have final say on, on, in particular, when there's an emergency, mayor and council have to declare an emergency for a soul. And if there's a provincial or federal emergency, then, as the mayor indicated, our policies don't really mean a whole.
as the mayor indicated, our policies don't really mean a whole lot, that, it's only when, when we're, we're the acting authority. If the feds of the province are the acting authority, then you know, we, we report to them, we are, the MGA states, we are a child of the province, so, um, they, they get to make those rules. So we, we can adjust this to, to reflect that, it's only, it's only with respect to the town's water restriction policy. If there's any other emergencies declared, then they obviously, um, have precedence.
And that's probably in our emergency management plan. Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, just, uh, thinking on the same line, I, I think if, if there's a fire emergency or how we handle fire bans is that, um, the, the chief kind of handles for the most part, right? Um, and then when it comes to a emergency, um, or higher levels, then it of course comes to the council and, uh, and we, uh, discuss and go from there. Is that how water emergencies handles or water levels, uh, restriction levels handled, and is that what other municipalities do as well?
Yes, absolutely, like, i- if, if we're calling a local state of emergency, it'd be council's decision to do so. Um, and if it's a provincial, then our hands are tied, but, yeah.
But for the, for the first parts, you know, where it's going from one to two or three, just like.
That would be designated to see.
Exactly, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, kinda going back just to the, uh, stage four and stage five provincially, so right now the province is at a stage four. If they declare a state, uh, stage five, is that, um, a provincial state of emergency? Do you know if a stage five is? And then our policy is gone out the window again, kind of to speak, like, I'm just wondering what happens at a, I know you said as stage five, um, we would be informed of that, but as a municipality, then do you follow what's happening provincially and then not, I guess, your policy?
So if the province, I mean, this policy was construction, constructed at the direction of the province, so before Christmas, um, before the holidays, pardon me, they, uh, the province sent an email saying, we're in a level four. Given the fact, uh, given the low precipitation that we're having, we could advance to a level five, and they laid out a number of steps, uh, the development of a water restriction policy, if you don't have one, is one of them. If they move to a, uh, step five, it does not necessarily mean that it is a provincial emergency. It's just that we're in a drought state, uh, level five and, and the province has resources or, or, you know, around the province to, to understand the water levels and, and where they are, and we would receive specific direction from the province if we're in a, uh, impacted area.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and then just another question, just helping me understand and then helping for everyone else, uh, listening to understand. So how do we determine our stages? Right now I'm hearing that, um, the North Saskatchewan is sitting good and we're, you know, we're not in any of the stages. So what initiates a stage one for us, I guess, for the policy to become active?
So it'd be, i- it's procedural at, at the water plant, so it would be based off our levels, um, and, and how the, the river's fluctuating, so we, we monitor, um, Alberta rivers so that we can see what the reservoirs are doing from Brazu Dam, who contribute to the North Saskatchewan that feeds us with our, our source water. Um, and we would base it off our, our levels, so if we're going below one meter, then we might wanna enact level one or stage one, um, and then kinda monitor as things go, and if we keep dropping in level, then we keep kind of increasing that. It could be very, various scenarios that can trigger this, though. So there could be water quality issues, there could be mechanical failures, there could be multiple things that can trigg- trigger this policy, that's why it's so critical to have in place.
And all of those decisions are made at the municipal level? We don't contact Alberta Environment or to move through the?
Well, we would have to, based off our approvals, yeah, so.
So we let them know what?
Do this based off the suggestions of Environment and, and our operations, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, if with, if we, um, uh, approve the policy today, will we be putting out a comms piece in the next couple days, preparing people for that this policy was created? I, and I guess the reason I'm saying that is because I wouldn't wanna initiate a stage one or a two or a three and all of a sudden people go, why, what's happening in the, and then panic, right? I think just to prepare them that, you know, under the provincial recommendation, we've created a water policy with, like, da, 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 da. Is that what the plan kind of is?
Yeah, we would obviously let the public know that we've approved this, but we wanna do further education with the public, so we're, we're thinking, um, we're working with comms and we're coming up with kind of a strategy to, to implement in beginning of March, to kinda start really pushing um, the education, but we'll get the policy that is approved out to the public right away.
Okay.
Via newspaper, radio, all of those.
All of that, okay. Deputy Clark?
Uh, last question. Um, so we talk about the purpose and it, it refers to the community. Um, I know there's a whole bunch of county folks who are connected to our water infrastructure, right? Um, do we have to include them at all, or is there a thought to, or is it, or do we just simply say user, and which could refer to any connection to the town water infrastructure?
Exactly, it, 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 anybody that's connected to our water, we can enforce upon.
Okay, I guess we don't explicitly say that, though, I guess is my point.
No, we don't in the bylaw either, but it all applies to, to anybody that's pulling from our water source.
And I guess, sorry, Colin said last question, but I have one more question. How do the businesses that would be more affected, like laundromat, car washes? Um, are they getting like a copy of the policy or are they getting a, a heads up that we've just implemented this policy, so, because it's going to affect their business, right? So rather than be surprised again?
Well, we can do a mail out to them, to the, to the heavier users.
Heavier users?
Yep.
Okay.
On that, for sure.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Counselor Evans?
Yes, stay under stage three. Scheduling time sprinkler systems will not be permitted. Should that be changed to scheduled time sprinkling? And not permitted? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Were you an English teacher? I think that was Tom. I think Tom was the English teacher, weren't you? Yes, I'd love if you could make a motion. And then there is amendments.
You wanna shoot me the amendments? There are sections. Given the amount of questions around this policy, I would suggest that we take it away, make the amendments and bring it back. It's not a bylaw, it's a policy, so it's not first reading, it's, it's a motion, so I would, um, uh, unless you are comfortable with how this is gonna be worded from us, I, I would suggest that we take it back, reword a couple of, uh, pieces of it and, uh, bring it back to the next meeting. They're small adjustments, but they're important.
Um, and then just with that, would we still have time to prepare for communications and, you know, moving into, um, March, right? But would it still be good for time?
We're already working on the communication, so it's, i- i- it's not gonna impact that portion of it.
Okay, Counselor Evans?
So should I just accept it as, as information for now, and you guys will bring back the amendment?
That's one option, yeah, that, that will work.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make the motion that council accepts the report as information only at this time.
Okay, perfect. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Okay, next up we have, uh, Mr. Hans von Klaveren, nine point five for the Drayton Valley Brazu Recreation Board bylaw.
Thank you, Chair, and, uh, through the chair and to the rest of council. So this report is regarding the Drayton Valley and Brazil Recreation Board. We had a joint recreation board for many years where, uh, the town of Drayton Valley and Brazil County worked together, uh, regarding recreational items, and that happened for many years, of course, with the cost sharing agreement in place as well. In the recent past, for just about two years, uh, we did only have the, uh, Drayton Valley Recreation Board operating as a se- separate entity under terms of reference, as we were sorting out our relationship, uh, regarding our joint, uh, agreements. In the spring of twenty, uh, twenty-three, it became clear that we would go again back to our joint recreation board, and we installed that with the appointing in the organizational meeting in the past November, two counselors from both Drayton Valley and two counselors from Brazil County back to the board, and this board came together in January. January of this year, and they discussed, first of all, of course, their bylaw and, uh, uh, organizational of this board itself. The four counselors that were present at that time discussed, uh, especially for the bylaw and for their organizational structure of the, uh, composition of the board, the possibility of, uh, adding, uh, members at large from the public, uh, to this board to have a good, uh, let's say recreational input from the community and have a direct link with our residents for which we have our services in place. At that meeting, the motion was passed to bring back, uh, the bylaw and changed bylaw uh, for council to consider, because we have to work with both, uh, Brazil County and Drayton Valley together to make sure that the new bylaw with those amendments are in place. When we talked about that, uh, you see that we attached to this, uh, uh, report both the track changes, that's a little bit complicated document, because that's basically based on the old, uh, bylaws that are still in place, uh, the changes that are needed in there, and then the new bylaw as the second document that we can, uh, take here for a vote for first reading. I highlighted the most important sections in those changes, because we did some, uh, housekeeping in there as well. But the most important one are, of course, the addition of the two members at large, one from each municipality. The terms, uh, of, uh, the two members at large to be two years. The quorum that has to change based on this board composition, so to be four them, uh, board members present, and it says at least one of each category, and a category is one counselor from, uh, Drayton Valley, one counselor from Brazil County, and one of the members at large, at least one of each, plus of course a fourth person to be quorum. And to repeal the current bylaw that's in place, that's basically running to the end of this year, but to re- uh, repeal that bylaw, the amendment that we made, uh, back in twenty twenty to make sure that the bylaw was, uh, correct with the Brazil County and lined up, and the terms of reference documentation that we had in place for the past two, two and a half years. So it's here asked at the table that the council takes, uh, the first reading of bylaw twenty twenty-four oh one C, after which, of course, then we can have amendments maybe, uh, taking place when we go to second and third reading. Here at the table, it's recommended to do only first reading, because further up in this document, you see that we also have to make sure that we, of course, talk with Brazil County and see what council over there does. They did, uh, first reading as well, but it did not go past second reading over there, so here at the table, it's recommended to do first reading and then, uh, board will discuss, uh, of course, the items that, uh, let's say have come forward, maybe out of this discussion here at the table, but for sure also in Brazil County. Plus, there's always opportunity between first reading and second reading to go to the community, get input and have council take other considerations, uh, as well. So with that, there is no, uh, other complications or, uh, implementa, uh, let's say, uh, implications to any, uh, organizational items. The biggest item is, of course, that you get more direct input from communities at large, uh, to have them sitting at the board with a vote as well. It's still a recreational board that advises council to make decisions. So the recommendation down here is that council give first reading to bylaw twenty twenty-four oh one C as presented. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. You said the county already did their first reading?
That's correct, they passed first reading.
And is the bylaw the same wordings as we have here?
That's correct, it's the same wording to make sure that those bylaws are not in conflict with each other, so they are the same.
So would it not matter then if we do second and third?
The recommendation is here, thank you for that question, not to do second, because in the discussion, uh, as Brazil County, there were more discussions happening that they did not pass second reading, so it would not be advisable to speed up down here, because as soon as we do second and third at this meeting, the bylaw for us is straight away in place, while it's not yet for, uh, Brazil County, and there might be discussion on that a little further, so it's recommended to take it as council bylaw in their hand, taking it as first reading, and wait with second and third reading to a next, uh, regular meeting.
Okay, thank you for that input, uh, in that case, I'd like to make a motion, unless there's further discussion.
Sure, go ahead, Deputy Clark?
Um, just, uh, composition of the board number five, or sorry, number six, I think we talked about in the rec board meeting was removing the rigidity from that and adding in their and or designate. Um, so if you, for whatever reason, got sick, which you never do, you're like Superman, um, we could add in the and or designate, so it's not, you know, you don't have to be there necessarily, I guess is, is my point. Does that make sense?
Yes, uh, thank you for that question, it makes sense. Um, and of course, in the, uh, definition, there's of course always the possibility for a designate to be, uh, appointed, so the general manager of community and recreation service, same as the director of community recreation service, can still send a designate to those meetings, so they don't have to be in present physically themselves if they cannot be.
Okay, so in that same line of thinking, though, if we look at number seventeen, we talk about, or his or her designate, so we probably wanna be consistent there one way or another, right?
Correct, so we'll take that in consideration to maybe change between the readings, but, uh, it is intended to be his or her designate as well.
Um, with, uh, number six as well on the composition of the board, does it need to include, um, director of community services? Um, and I guess the question is, because when I look at the composition, it says two counselors by the, um, town, two by the county, um, two members at large, and then it mentions that the general manager of community and recreation services shall be the recording secretary, but it doesn't mention the director of community services. It just says that it shall not be a voting member, so should it just be, should it just have a line or a number in there just to say that composition, that the director as well is part of that composition?
Well, I think when we talked, um, that it was going to be just Hans's role, that would be the recording secretary, right, not, not his counterpart at the, at the county.
Oh, so there isn't, um, an administrative person from the county?
There is, um, so if you look at number six, it talks about, you know, Hans in this instance is the recording secretary.
Yeah.
And then it, all it says in the next line is Hans and Lee, as, yeah, Lee, um, shall not be considered a voting member. So it references both of those roles, so Lee is definitely part of that chambers.
Okay, I just di- didn't read it as it's, he could, what's composition, go ahead.
So, yeah, maybe as clarification, so the composition of the board, so now you talk about board members that have a seat and a vote, are the two counselors from both communities, plus in this case the residents at large. Present at the meeting is, of course, the director from Brazil and the general manager from Drayton Valley, present at the meetings, so not com- part of the composition of the board, but present at the meetings.
Present.
And with, yes, and with the, uh, my position, the general manager for Drayton Valley, to be the recording secretary or my designate, because we basically take care then of the administrative recording.
Okay, so I guess Lee doesn't have a role, he's just listening?
Yes, he has a role as listener, advise, a matter expert, basically. Same as my role as a general manager, matter, matter expert, to be present at those meetings, but not composition of the board with a voting seat.
Okay. Lots of questions today. Uh, okay, if there's no other questions, um, then I believe Counselor Ballas was ready to make a motion with, yeah, I'm just wondering, was there an amendment or? I thought Hans said it was included in the definitions, so.
My point was six and seventeen, they're, uh, sorry, yeah, six and seventeen, one doesn't reference or designate, seventeen references or designate, so it's be consistent, that's all. So make the motion, okay?
Um, oh, did, did you want to add something? Sorry?
Yeah, so for, uh, simplification of the process, if the first reading now takes this, uh, as a presented, we can make this little short edit, basically, before we take it to second. we can make this little short edit basically before we take it to second reading and we can make it clear then that that's done.
Okay, perfect. Okay, did you want to go ahead with the motion then?
I will move that council give first reading to bylaw 2024 slash oh one slash C with the proposed amendments. Does that make sense?
Sure.
That's the wish for council, yes.
Okay. Any comment, question or debate on the motion? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. I will call a ten minute break and then we'll reconvene and jump back into the decision items. Thank you. Okay, perfect. We will reconvene our meeting at ten twenty-three AM. We'll jump back into our decision items. We had an addition this morning, nine point five point five SOS letter of support. Councillor Ballas.
Thank you. I think it's prudent that we address this today and make a decision as to whether we're going to support the SOS and their continuation of the program. And I therefore would like to make a motion that we make a resolution, that we will provide a letter of commitment to the Drayton Valley Community Foundation, that we will support the fifty thousand dollars that they requested.
Thank you for your motion. So your motion is a request for a letter of support to SOS for fifty thousand dollars for their project?
Yeah, I think a letter of commitment.
A letter of commitment. Go ahead, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, your worship, through, through you to councillor Ballas. I think administration would need some clarification about what you mean if, if it's to reconsider a decision at budget time. I believe the ask from SOS was fifty thousand dollars, so if that is your intent to support him with fifty thousand dollars, then we would need a budget adjustment to, to do that.
I think we have some options in how we can possibly fund it. And I believe in discussions that we would have in a reference six months to a year to find what options are available. And you're right, it would have to come from budget somewhere. So yes, it would have to be a discussion on the budget aspects of it and where the possibility of that funding may be available, whether it's from another budgeted item that is not being used to the full extent or, or where it may be available, but I would certainly like to do that.
Yeah, it's completely a hundred percent council's authority to, to, to make those decisions, but again, we would, we would need to, I guess, understand what you're asking. Are you asking administration to go back and, and see where we would find that fifty thousand dollars and bring a report forward? Or are you indicating that we make the budget adjustment, that council give direction to staff, administration to make a budget adjustment and bring report back for approval?
There is some urgency here, simply because of the fact the county has approved their fifty thousand dollars, subject to the town making that commitment as well. And in order to get the fifty thousand dollars from the county, the town needs to make that commitment. If we do not make that commitment, of course, they will not receive the fifty thousand dollars from the county and the project will cease. So there is some urgency on our part.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor, to councillor Ballas. I can appreciate that. I, we, we still need clear direction, so if, if council so wishes to make a budget adjustment to fund SOS Media, the fifty thousand dollars, then you have the authority to do that. We need that direction from council.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ferris. Councillor Ballas.
And then how would I amend my motion?
So the motion is on the table, we'd have to vote on the motion because your motion was to send a letter of commitment, yeah, to SOS. And what Mr. Ferris is saying is that that would be a reconsideration of the budget. So we had passed budget and part of the budget process was to decline this project. And so we'd have to go back and look at the, the budget again and reconsider because it still would stand the same. I know that we had mentioned that there might have been grants out there for the SOS, so unless council is, you know, changed their mind on adding this back into the budget or if we're wanting to push the, push forward with the grants, yeah, I think Mr. Ferris is right, it's a bigger discussion. So perhaps what we'll do is we'll, there's a motion on the table, we'll vote on the motion and then we'll circle back to if there is a recommendation or a motion to direct administration to reconsider the budget for this project. Does that sound fair? Mr. Ferris, sure?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a little clarity on that. So the budget, you don't have to reconsider the budget because reconsideration of an item that council has decided on are specifically associated to decision report items. So in budget, we don't need to reconsider that. What, what we need to do is if, is just do a budget adjustment. So if that is the direction of council, then, you know, we can receive that direction or we can receive direction to come up with suggested funding for, for that if directed by council. So, so either way, I, I just wanted to clarify, we don't need to reconsider the whole budget. We just need, it's fifty thousand dollars, it's a substantial amount of money. So if we're to find that, we, we either need to do a budget adjustment, which accountants get excited about, or, well, we would need to do a budget adjustment, or if there's alternative funding out there that we're not aware of and, and council is aware of or SOS Media is aware of, then to let us know and, and to pursue that, that grant, we can certainly take that direction as well.
Okay, councillor Ballas.
We, we, sorry, just, we do have a meeting with Travel Alberta tomorrow morning in regards to actually obtaining a grant, but we do have to make a decision so that they know whether they can go forward or not. And I think the time limit is getting down to a couple of weeks.
Deputy clerk?
Sorry, was a motion made? Did we make a?
The motion was for a letter of commitment to SOS for funding of the project.
I would make a friendly amendment and this is in the spirit of fairness with Brazu and beyond. You know, we tied the decision to, you know, tied them together in terms of our decision, right? So their ask was what, nine thousand and change or something like that?
Or do you want to wait because there may be an additional motion coming out of this after?
Supposedly.
I think that's what the.
Yeah, let's do that, but yeah.
Because, yeah, we can't really pass this motion because we don't have, we haven't made the decision for the funds to allocate. So there is a motion on the table that came from councillor Ballas for a letter of commitment to SOS for the funding of fifty thousand dollars for the project. Does everyone kind of get that? Okay. Councillor Evans?
So if we supported this motion, then administration would then bring back a report indicating the budget adjustment and where the money would come from? Or are we circumventing that whole process and committing to that money right now and you simply need to make that, make that change? What I'm wondering is, is at some point, say next meeting, will we be looking at a report from administration showing us where the money will come from and how we can make it work? And would we have the option to vote in favor or against that? Or is this, are we going forward no matter what if we support this motion right now?
If you supported this motion right now, you'd be going forward and then administration would have to figure out what Mr. Ferris is requesting is that, deal with this motion and then if we're wanting to make a motion to bring back a report to have a budget adjustment for this line item, then that's what administration would do. Makes sense? Councillor Gomana?
Thank you. I understand the, the importance of the, the project we've, we've supported that a couple of years already and, you know, it has, it has done well for us. My concern is that during the budget process, we've discussed this extensively with other projects that's been given by the community to consider as a council. And we went through all of that, we discussed and we've approved some, unfortunately, we didn't approve many just because of the budget constraints that we had. For me, it's tough without knowing where the, where the money is going to come from and also discussing other projects that we've let go because budget constraints. And I have, have a whole conversation again if that's what we wish, rather than having a conversation about one or two projects. Like I said, if, if money was not an issue, I would, I would support all of them, but it is, it is a constraint that, that we have. So that's, that's why I would like to know where the money is going to come from before we move ahead with this motion. Just my thoughts.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just for a little clarification, so a budget adjustment means that the, you know, the, the approved budget, we haven't taxed for that budget yet. So a budget adjustment would be an increase to, to what we tax. Fifty thousand dollars represents not half a percent, so it would be less than half a percent increase. So that, that is one option available to council. The other option is to frankly, direct administration to come back with a report around funding options to this. And so that would take a couple of weeks for the next council meeting. So you do have two options available to you if you want to pursue that project. So again, one is to do a budget adjustment, that's what I would recommend. We, you know, everybody understands it was a tough budget year, we're, we're making sure that we're being as efficient as possible. Or the other option, option two, is to direct administration to come back with a report with different options, one of those being a budget adjustment. Another could be to find it in, in our existing budget somewhere. So we'd have to have a hard look at that and there probably would be impacts to, to another project.
Thank you very much for that. I would echo councillor Gomana's comments. I think that by reconsidering this project, then, I mean, there would be a lot of other projects to reconsider and in my opinion, the decision was made and it definitely was not an easy decision. They were very difficult decisions to get to the budget that were asked or that were, that we came to. And now by adding another fifty thousand dollars, we're back to adding projects back in. And I can think of other projects that are significantly more important than, not to say that this isn't important, this is a community quality of life, but, you know, hearing that we have facilities that roofs are leaking and we have, you know, I guess crucial repairs that need to be done and maintenance and, and equipment and, and things that operate and provide a service to our community, if we're looking at putting fifty thousand dollars back on the budget, I, I think administration definitely could come up with ways that we definitely, or more, you know, urgent things in the budget that need addressing right now. So for me, it's very hard because I don't know how I would pick this over others, especially knowing, like I said, that we're in dire straits with some of our facilities and, and some of the situations. So there is a motion on the table for a letter of commitment for SOS for the fifty thousand dollars to go ahead with this project. Councillor Ballas?
Okay. I, I don't think we're adding to the budget, we're just looking to pivot somewhere. And I think when we look at the fact that we, right now, we don't have two CPOs, there's savings there. I look at the landscaping budget that we have, perhaps there's money that's, could be saved there. I, I think when we want to revisit some of the budgeted impacted items that we have, that we could find that fifty thousand dollars without adding. The situation is they've already invested and we have already invested a whole lot of money in this project. And if the town is afraid of investing in themselves, then I find it very difficult to ask other people to invest in our town. That project filled a lot of homes. It has over a million hits. It's a valuable piece of promoting our town. The next phase is promoting healthcare. What bigger priority is there in this town than healthcare? I think a fifty thousand dollar investment in promoting healthcare in our area is not an unwise decision. I very strongly urge council to support this.
Thank you for that. Yeah, again, it wasn't an easy cut, just like many other from the budget. There's a lot of things that were of significant importance to the community, to our facilities, to so many things that council had to make the hard decisions, administration had to help us with those decisions when we did our budget cuts. And unfortunately, this wasn't because we don't believe in it or want to have it, it's because we don't have the dollars to make this project go forward. One of the things we also talk about it is affordable housing. We have a housing shortage, so if we're attracting people to our community, we definitely need to get our house in order and look at what we're doing with affordable housing for sure. So there's a motion on the table for a letter of commitment to SOS for fifty thousand dollars to move ahead with the project. If there's no further comment, question or debate, I'll ask all in favor. All opposed? That is denied. So now if there's a request, councillor Ballas to make another motion on the table. Councillor, or sorry councillor, Mr. Ferris had said to you now the request would be for administration to put together a report to see. We denied the letter of commitment to go forward, so now, Mr. Ferris had said, now a motion could be made. Do you want to repeat what you said? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two options. So one was to do a budget adjustment. The, the other option is for council to direct administration, and you alluded to it earlier, councillor Ballas, to, to come back with an administrative report to, to identify where we would fund that fifty thousand dollars from. You mentioned the two CPOs, well, they've been vacant for a couple of weeks, so that's not going to amount to fifty thousand dollars, but there, there may be other projects that may finish under budget, but we won't know that till, till, till those projects are completed. It, it is just February, I guess. So, you know, we're, we're moving through, moving through those. You see in the, in the agenda today, the project stash reports on those projects, so we won't, we won't be able to really achieve any efficiencies on those until they're done and we can, and we can record those budgets. But council does have the authority to direct administration to go to bring back a report on the SOS. on the SOS media item and identify different funding options. If that makes sense. That, that would be, that would be, if I was you, sir, that would be the motion that I would.
I'm just going to go to Counselor Gomana first.
What I was going to say is that what I would like to, is if something like can be done, then bring back the dollar amount of how, how much there that we can allocate funding, right? You know, at that time, then we can decide with the list that we had, which we should be allocating those available funds. You know what I mean?
So he's requesting, rather than saying, go back in the budget, put a report together to go back in the budget to find where we can find fifty thousand dollars. He's saying, could you make the same motion to go back in the budget and see if we can find some more money? And then how much that money would be and whether it would go to this project or another project on the list? Is that right? No, no, that's not your motion, but that's what Counselor Gomana is asking.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that. That, that does clarify it. I honestly, I think, no disrespect, Counselor Gomana, but that's an unfair request. You know, we're, we're February. We're just starting to get things going. We can't, we, if we start to do that, then it would, I mean, that's a very large exercise to look at everything that might happen. We can, we can, we can identify, you know, pockets of an area to, or projects that perhaps we can put aside to fund SOS media. But we need time to go through and find fifty thousand dollars would be the target for us to go through the budget and find an amount of money, undetermined amount of money, and then relook at all of our budgets to see what projects you'd want to do. We, we might as well start the budget process again. It just, it's not, it's not a real actionable request for, for administration to. If it was December and we're looking at forecasting out how we're about to finish in our budget year, that, that might work. But we, we just started February and I think it's, it's a bit of unfair request. I think if the request to go back and find fifty thousand dollars and identify how we would fund that fifty thousand dollars right now, that's reasonable. We can, we can do that. Council may not be excited about some of the options that we identified, but we can certainly do that. But to go and try to find a undetermined amount of money is, is, is a difficult process.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we direct administration to review the budget. And, and what, Wally? And see if there is an allocation of fifty dollars that could be distributed to supporting the SOS project. What did I say? Oh, fifty thousand.
Fifty dollars, I give it to you right now. And if I, if I may help your motion a bit, Counselor Ballas, I think the motion would be to direct administration to come back with a report to council to identify funding options for SOS media.
Okay, you got that? Okay, perfect. Okay, so Counselor Ballas has made a motion to direct administration to put together a report to find other funding options to support fifty thousand dollars for the SOS media campaign. Any comment, question or debate on the motion? Counselor Sheriff?
I like what he did, but I think it's a, a big task to be asking administration at this point. And I think decision was made and I'm not sure if we should be going back at this time. I think it's a little bit too early. And it's very specific to the SOS media. And having a thirty-six-year-old sander, I just can't get behind this one. So I just can't get behind it. Sorry, Bill.
Yeah, I, I hear you, Monica. It's tough, you know, there was the, and I'm probably going to get this wrong, valve replacement or the, remember, we only approved doing a certain amount of those? And I just, I just think that there's more things that are critical and crucial if we're directing administration to go back and find fifty thousand dollars that we could put that fifty thousand dollars. I think it's a great project. I think if we can move forward with trying to find them the dollars, them and beyond travel for that grant, like the, I think the deadline was March. I think that, yes, like we said, contingent on the success of the grant application. If we can find the dollars, I mean, I know that when they came here and presented, maybe, you know, Ryan from Travel Tourism was confident that he could work, you know, with the town to get that grant. Those matching dollars could be the county. So I mean, it's not to say that the county still can't put their dollars in, go ahead with the project. And, you know, we're still on that contingent on the grant. I still think that's, you know, for me, that's where I stand. But to find the fifty thousand dollars, I just think there's too many other things. Like finding out, you know, just talking to Mr. Ferris and some of the projects that didn't even get put on this list that are urgent is, is, you know, just crucial to, if they fail, you know, then it's not going to be good for our residents. So very tough decisions. Counselor Gomana?
You go ahead.
I totally disagree with your comments saying this, that this is not crucial. I think this is very important to the promotion of our town and, and moving it forward. And I very disagree with, with your comments there. I feel that it's a worthwhile project to consider. I don't think it'll take a whole lot of administration's time. And I'm not sure, Wally, I, I don't want to input how much time you have to put into it, but I think it's worthwhile. And I just hate to see the project jeopardized. The county does not support the project if we do not support the project. And then it just dies. And there's over, I don't know, but there's, I think there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more has been invested in that project already. To just let it die and to see the value that it has provided for our town. To me, I think it's a fifty thousand dollar investment that's going to pay great dividends. And I realize there's other projects. I understand that. But I'm speaking specifically of this project.
Just a comment, Bill. I think everyone, all of council supports this project. That's, you know, we definitely support it. We just don't have the money. Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. I agree. It, it's a great project and it has showcased our community for the last couple of years. But my concern is that, like Monica said, you know, we have basic necessities that, that we are struggling to provide as, as a municipality. On top of that, we have some newcomers already here, which we need to provide some assistance, which we've denied that request as well during the, the budget process. So without taking care of who is here, we, we are trying to attract more as well. So that, that's my, my second concern. Once again, you know, I understand the, the importance of the project, but we need to look at as a whole, which projects that we've approved and which project that we've denied, and then have a bigger conversation rather than one specific.
Thank you for that. Lots of great comments. Again, just takes us back to how difficult that budget decision was and all the decisions. And every, every item on the project and operating list is important. And it's important to, you know, whether it's, you know, the organizations or the businesses or the counselors or the community. But they're important decisions that nobody wants to have to decline. But they're the tough decisions that we have to make. So with the motion being on the table, if there's no further comment, question or debate, I'll call all in favor. All opposed? That is defeated. Okay, so moving on now to, do we want to go into? I guess we have our delegation here. We'll circle back around to our delegation. Pardon me? I don't know if Tom's online. So our delegation, Mr. Tom Schroeder, seven point two, Drayton Valley Flying Club delegation is here this morning. Thank you. If you want to come to the podium, that would be wonderful.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Tom Schroeder. I'm the assistant manager of the airport. And I first, I'd like to thank you for the support of the airport over the years. Every time I see a medevac come in and, and assist somebody to wherever they need to go, I say thank you. What I'd like to talk about today is the pavement upgrades at the airport. As you may know, the, the Flying Club, the Drayton Valley Flying Club, is the operator of the airport. And Daryl Kisser and I are the managers. We take care of the day-to-day running of the airport and so forth. On the airport, we have, it's called the movement area, which includes the runway and the taxiways and the north and south aprons. And we are slated to have the crack filling done and the line painting done. So that's all good. The consultants we've talked about have said that the runway and this, these other areas are in good shape as long as we maintain the crack filling. So that's all good. Now, between the north and south aprons, there is another taxiway called Taxiway Charlie. And the consultants have told us that this is unreparable. It is in such poor condition that it will need an overlay of asphalt. Now, this taxiway is vital to the airport because aircraft who land and go to the north apron for fueling, they need to get to the south apron for parking and the terminal building, and they use this taxiway. Also, aircraft who need to go from one end of the airport to the other, depending on the winds, they need to use that taxiway to get to that other end of the runway. So we do need this taken care of. I have four quotes. There's three that were submitted to you. I have a fourth one that came in a little later. And they are between sixty and eighty thousand dollars to do an asphalt overlay. We're looking at about nine hundred feet by about twenty-four feet, as you can see there. So this can be done this summer. And yesterday, actually, I was presenting to council at the county about this. And they voted unanimously in favor of going ahead with this project. They were looking at a maximum of eighty thousand dollars to take care of this. Now, what we're looking at with the county is they have paving crews coming in during the summer anyway. And they were even suggesting to me that we just add this on to their, their annual paving. And that would reduce the cost of that considerably. The quotes that I had obtained for sixty to eighty thousand were for someone to come in and do just this job. So if they're already doing the paving for the county, they could just swing over and do that for quite a bit less. I don't know how much, but we could be hoping for maybe fifty thousand and so on. Now, the funding for that, I'm listening here this morning and I realized things are tight. So the county had said they would pay for half of it and they'd be approaching town council to support the other half. Last night, I was talking to Jerry Greiner, the president of our association. And he said that because we have had very little snowfall, we have some money in our kitty. So if we're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars, let's say, for half of it, I'm proposing that maybe town and the Flying Club could get together and see how we could pay for that other half. I don't know if the Flying Club could pay for all of it, but I think a good portion of it, from what Jerry told me. So here we are and I am presenting this to you now.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, you come at bad timing when we're discussing.
I realize.
Money, right? But we appreciate you coming. We know the importance of the, the taxi runways and what it costs to maintain those. So maybe what I'll do is I'll open it up for questions from council. Do you have anything, Counselor Evans?
I'm not sure. And I'm just kind of, you know, trying to figure out how we can help you out here. And there's really no easy answer. I, I, I'd suggest that we, we wait to see what the final dollar amount is. And, and we can really only give you a tentative commitment at this time. I think we'd probably go through the same process that we just talked about. And if you came back to us and said, you know, you, you, you could pay a portion of it and we'd have to come up with ten or fifteen thousand dollars or something, I, I would think that there would be interest from, from council to, to say, okay, can, can administration find us fifteen thousand to, to pitch in? That would be my reasonable response to, to going forward here. I agree with the mayor that we want to support the airport. We want it to be operation, operationally sound. But as you've heard, at this point in time, we've, we've already finalized our, our, our budget and, and we made a lot of difficult decisions to come to that. So that, that would be, that would be my suggestion if, if, if council is supportive of that.
Thank you for your comments. So you said when you presented to the county yesterday, they had talked about, they might be able to just kind of tack it on with some paving that they're doing and things like that. So would they include this portion in their tenders going out so we'd have a more accurate number? You have, just with some of your estimates here, a range between sixty to eighty thousand. So would you have a more accurate number? And is it going to be included in their tenders, I guess?
That I don't know, but I could get back to you on that. Also, I could bring it up with our council at the Flying Club to see how much we could contribute to that. And if we could contribute fifteen or twenty thousand, then it's, it's becoming more doable.
Yeah, yeah. I think Counselor Evans is right, right? Until we know what that exact number is and then what, you know, the, the club can put in, then we'd have a more solid number. I'm not sure, Mr. Ferris, if there was, let's say, and I'm just throwing it out, there are ten thousand or something, where would we find? Would it be the same thing as having to go back and set up a report? Or how would we move ahead with something like this?
Yes, well, I guess my, you know, my first comment would be, try to make these requests so we can consider them during budget deliberations. I believe that administration reached out to the airport on a number of occasions and never received a request. So now we're kind of in a difficult situation. So there are a number of ways to approach this. We just had the full discussion on Counselor Ballas's request to reconsider the SOS media one, so I won't regurgitate all of that. So those are still options for, for council for ten thousand dollars, if it's, if it's that amount. We, we do have the contingency fund that we can draw on as well. But that has, we're, we're six weeks into the year and it's already taken a, a bit of a beating. So, but that is always an option for council to consider. Also, sir, if you could, could you share your consultant's report? Is there anything else in there that the town or the county needs to consider in the future? That will allow us to understand any future requests that may be coming.
I don't have that with me, but like I said, they, they consider the runway and the movement area to be in, in good shape. So there's nothing in the future other than regular crack filling. So the runway doesn't need any overlay or paving in, for quite a, quite a long time. And this small bit here would then take care of everything that we need. And then the entire airport would be, for capital expenses, would be in good shape for quite a, quite a long time.
Before budget, there was talk of a fueling tank.
There was, and.
To have an understanding of, a full ask over the next, over the next year or two so that we can. To have an understanding of a full ask over the next, over the next year or two so that we can have a supportive way to
The Flying Club looked at that very much in depth, and we decided that we're going to stay with it as it is, simply because if we go to a large expenditure, get in a whole new fuel system with an outside vendor managing it and taking care of it, we just found through the grapevine that if there is an issue in the breakdown, they're quite slow in repairing it. So we don't want to be down for four to six months without fuel at the airport. People rely on us for fuel. So we're going to maintain the system that we have and carry on with that. So the only other issue that's
Go ahead.
Hi, Tom. We submitted a grant application last year, and I'm wondering, does this overlap with this? Maybe sign that grant application?
Yeah.
This is, I think, the third time I've submitted that, or we've submitted that.
Right.
And hopefully, if we can get it this year, the grant people keep telling me resubmit. So that's what we're doing.
So that would include this?
That would, but that could be used for this. Or that could be used for paying for the crack filling and the line painting that we're doing this year. And then that money could be
When will you find out? When do they release that, the grants?
Off the top of my head, I think it was June, but I'm not positive on that.
Did it say on the application? It was, wasn't a lot of information on that. I remember signing it. That's the one I was telling you about.
Yeah, sorry, I should have brought it with me, but
Deputy Clark?
Thanks, Tom. One of the things that I'm curious about that really isn't clear in here, what are the risks with not doing this? Like, is there a timeline? You know, is it good for another three years? Or are there regulatory bodies that mandate you must have this in ex, you know?
No, there's, there's nothing. We've been managing with this for, it's been like this for five or six years. And we could live with it for another year if we had to. That wouldn't be the end of the world. The big risks with this is because it's a connecting taxiway, we do get jets coming in. And because it's breaking up so bad, even though we keep sweeping it, there's lots of debris on the, on this thing, bits of asphalt and gravel. And if a jet sucks that up, well, that's the end of the engine, and then we're talking millions and millions of dollars. Even the propeller-driven aircraft taxiing on this are picking up and damaging their propellers. We get complaints understandably. So it's not a life and death situation, but for a jet, it could be. We'd like to get it done this year if possible, but it could be delayed.
And when medevac comes in, they use this taxiway to come and to load and unload?
They, most of the jets and medevac know the condition of it, and they avoid it. That means they have to go out back onto the runway and backtrack all the way around the runway and come back around to the north apron. If they do, medevac itself does not usually do that. They come in, they load up, and they go. They don't need to refuel. So they don't usually have an issue with that taxiway.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I make a comment that I've been considering. We're coming into wildfire season again, and that airport was heavily used last summer, right?
Very heavily.
Right. I mean, the, I guess the implications go beyond just kind of day-to-day. It's, you know, for those emergency uses as well, right? So I guess the risk is also not having it in tip-top shape for those sorts of times, right?
And we are looking at this summer, hopefully not having another fire season, but even if the fires are not local, they do base out of our airport. So they do need a tip-top airport, yeah.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, thank you very much for coming. If you could, I think there was some suggestions from Council Evans there. Once you get a more accurate number, then that'll help us decide. And then we can have those conversations with the county. And then I guess, too, maybe, you know, seeing we have a little bit of time, it sounds like what the results of that grant will kind of come back. And then if you can also get us maybe a more accurate number, too, on what the club has, and that they could contribute, that would be wonderful as well.
I can do that. On another small note here, June 1st is our pancake breakfast. And we have helicopter rides, which last year brought in $3,000, which we gave to the victims of the fire. So we are right now looking for a charity to give this to. I'm just listening. Maybe the SOS is something we could, it's only $3,000, but it's something we could talk about.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that suggestion. So, yeah, we'll mark June 1st on our calendars.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks so much.
Okay, so moving along the agenda, next up is 9.6, which is our closed. And if there is a member of council that can move us into closed under Section 16, 1R1 1? 11? I mean, 1L? I can't speak. Council Commander, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Perfect. Okay, so we have moved out of closed, and now we will reconvene. We do have two motions that are coming out of our closed session. The first motion will be made by Councilor Evans for in regards to the Campus Alberta Central Community Partner Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay, I'll make the motion that administration to work with Campus Alberta in formalizing our role as a community partner with the suggested amendments to the contract.
Thank you very much for that motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll ask all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Okay, and there's a second motion. The second motion is in regards to a thunder payment schedule, and Council Ballas will be making that motion. Go ahead.
I move that council grants the thunder organization a delay of their rear's payment for October 2023 by one month as per their request.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on that motion? And I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. And that is it for our decision items. Next up is council-initiated items. 10.1 was community peace officer. And whose name did I have? Who wants to speak to this? Got your mic on? No? Since this was a council, it came up. I think, was this your request, Rick? We talked about it. So it was added to the council-initiated item because a decision was made to only hire one. So do we need a motion for that? We do need a motion. Okay, let me, what page? Yo, I think that we're supposed to come as a sheet. We don't have the motions. Okay, so okay, so Wally will just quickly forward them to us, and whoever can look them. Okay, yep. Who would like to make the motion? Can you give that to Rick then, please? So this was in regards to community peace officer. We have two, what I say, we have two vacant positions currently, and the decision and conversation for council was to fill one of those, perhaps, positions. There was a motion that Council Evans will be making, and open for discussion.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Well, whereas the town's two community peace officers have both taken CPO positions in other municipalities, and whereas council discussed the level of service for CPO enforcement at the January 31th Governance and Priorities Meeting, therefore be it resolved that council direct administration to only advertise and hire one CPO position for the remainder of 2024.
Okay, thank you very much for that motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And then I'll ask all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Next up is 10.2 Waste Management Services. I believe Council Evans had brought this at our Governance and Priorities Meeting for discussion. If you want to give a little bit of background, or if you want to just jump right into a motion, the floor is yours, Council Evans.
Sure, a little bit of background to it. This was discussed in the Sustainability Committee meetings, and then I looked into it with, with members of our public work staff, and it was discussed in our Governance and Priorities Meeting what we wanted to do with our Waste Management Services, and whether we wanted to take a look at whether we should maybe be taking over a larger piece of the landfill operations, or at least look at it.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make the motion now.
You bet.
Whereas the town has a contract with GFL Environmental for the operations of the landfill facility, and whereas the town has a contract with Integrity Waste Solutions for curb collections for garbage and recycling, and whereas council would like to see if the town can operate the landfill and collection services more efficiently than the contracted services, therefore be it resolved that council direct administration to perform an analysis of current costs versus what it would cost the town to take over these operations.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Can I ask a couple? Oh, sir, go ahead, Deputy Collins?
I guess my question would be for administration in terms of, I guess, what does that look like from, like, how many hours would it take to do this? What's the, what's the capacity to do it? Do we have, everything else we're asking, is this, is this reasonable, or is this going to be a huge undertaking?
Thank you for the question. I was going to wait until after and talk about it, but it's a large undertaking, and given what we have on the go right now, I think it's an important analysis, by the way. But given what we have on the go right now with a number of different files, including looking at changing our insurance, that's a very large undertaking with RMA. The capacity to do this is, we wouldn't be able to really dedicate any resources to it, and probably until probably until the fall. And then an analysis of that nature for staff to do it, again, we'd be doing it on the corner of our desk. We can do it. We have some very skilled people working, working for us. So it's just the amount of work to do. And right now, with year end and audits and fire, dealing with the Fire RFP and all the training, and the switch over to RMA, we wouldn't really be able to get to it until, at the fall at the earliest.
Did you have another question?
I guess it'd be more for, for Rick and Sustainability Committee. I guess, what's the timeline that, like, was there a timeline saying we need this within a year, two months, or two years, or?
Well, you know, I, I think the sooner we could do it, the better. You know, we're tied into contracts with these folks, and if there is some savings there. But, you know, having said that, again, I personally, for me, I think it's worthwhile looking at that. I think with, with what we went through at budget, I think wherever we can find a way to lower our costs, which we would from, through various contracts, and the opportunity to, you know, therefore lower our costs, bring in larger revenue from the, from the landfill, I think it's a worthwhile exercise. I understood that it was going to be done as administration could find the time to do it. I think the only way to get around that and get it done quicker would be to farm it out. But of course, that costs money that, that we don't have. So you know, I think the reality is, if we support this, we need to understand that there's, there's going to be a, going to be a wait.
Any other comment, question, debate? Council Commander?
Just a quick question. I guess, refresh my mind. I'm sure it's been mentioned at the Sustainability Committee. When is the contract up for, for the current one? 2027? Okay, we have time. Thank you.
So with that being said, April 2027, if we were to take the undertaking of this analysis and then break those contracts as their penalties? Could be.
The contracts do have a out clause. We don't need to wait until they're, until they're done if we want to go ahead with it. And, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I had the same question as Deputy Clark on, you know, how large of an undertaking to do this analysis. That's the only thing I understand it needs to be done. I just worry the capacity, right, with everything, what that time, you know, timeframe, if we, if we approve this motion today, does it put the pressure on administration that they need to get this done, right? Or can it be tabled and come back at, you know, closer to budget, or I'm not sure?
Well, they've, they clearly indicated the timeline. It's a, it's a delay until the fall. So, yeah, we could put this off and look at it again in, in the fall, or we can vote on it with the understanding, which Wally has made clear, it'll be fall before they, before they get to it.
And would you be comfortable, or would administration be comfortable with that, that we were to make the motion and then in fall, that gives enough time to?
Yeah, I think as long as that understanding is there. So, you know, we'll begin it in the fall, depending on the breadth of the analysis. I'm not quite sure how long it'll take. You know, I would, I would, as you indicated, Council Evans, there could be potentially savings down the road on that, but there will be an initial capital outlay to get the equipment and, and some extra staff to, to do that. So there'll be substantial expenses to realize those savings. But that'll be part of the analysis. So, yeah, I, I'm comfortable with that. If, if, you know, we wait till the fall to begin, we should be good.
And then just a question, maybe Shelley, too. I just remember when I was on the Sustainability Committee, was it Sunova, Sunovis? That did, I'm just trying to look through my thing. Did we have an analysis done, or didn't? I thought, because I thought this came up with the last council, that there was a question on prior to taking back the scales. Didn't we do a little bit of an analysis of taking over that portion, or? Just wondering if some of this work isn't already done. That would save us a bit of time. Do you know?
That I'm not aware of, but I definitely will dig into it for you guys. There must have been something that was triggered for us to, to take over the scale.
I know.
So I bet there's some sort of documentation out there that we could probably track down.
That might just be help, yeah, speed things up, too, right, or add to it. I can even go through my files. I saved everything from there to see if there was. I just thought there was something I seen in the reporter, some sort of analysis done at one time. Go ahead, Council Evans.
And as well, I know the, our neighbors, the county, have just replaced their truck, bin haul truck, and I think a quick email to them would give you their specs that they put out, what they paid for it. I'm sure they'd be, well, I know they'd be happy to share that with us. I already kind of ran it by them. So, anyway, one piece that the information will be readily available.
Just, just one question. That truck is only for the bigger bins, right? Not for the curbside pickup?
And, and I really hadn't, I was looking more at the landfill itself, not the, not the curbside pickup. So I think that's where I would, I would focus on first and have the curbside pickup as a, as a separate, if we could. Because that would also involve, if we take that over, that would also involve hauling our own bins from all our, all our facilities as well. So there's numerous contracts that, that we'd be looking at replacing or saving ourselves from spending. But Wally's right, the, the initial capital outlay would be, would be significant.
Okay, any other comment, question, debate? I guess just that there is a motion. Does the motion, did it have a timeline, or did it speak to? Would you, would we needed to have that included in the motion, or? Would you, would we needed to have that included in the motion, um or?
No, that's fine, just. Sorry, uh no, that that's fine, as as long as there's an understanding here that it won't begin until, until the fall.
Okay, so uh there is a motion on the table, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, thank you very much. Okay, next up is roundtable discussions, does anybody have anything here that they wanted to add to the agenda? Go ahead, Counselor Sheriffs.
Um I just got an email again from uh Brad Robertson about that trailer advertising helped the pool. Like the, the, our little advertisement trailer.
Oh, and we were doing, that was for fundraising, so that was the one that's adjacent to the pump track?
Yeah.
And it was put up there. Hans, and maybe Hans could come and speak to this, I believe it was put up there by the Aquatic Fundraising Committee or something, or maybe I'm completely wrong, I'll just let Hans speak to this.
I I have, I have this gentleman emailing, you know, about it being an eyesore and such, if it can be moved, or, I don't know, yeah, I I talked to Wally about that a little bit, too.
Yes, correct, it's, thank you, and through the chair, uh to Counselor Sheriff, so this came already to us, so uh A, we are looking into, at least for the moment, uh make it nice, spruce it up a little bit, doesn't a complete eyesore, but uh we are discussing into keeping it yes or no. We are still, of course, uh inviting sponsors to come out and and help out uh for the debenture on this uh pool facility. But most likely, we will uh stop utilizing, and then make sure that it's gonna be removed from the location. Yep.
I think it's in ours. Yeah. It's on ours, I think, right?
It's the highways?
Oh. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Um okay, anybody have anything else? I think uh Counselor Evans, you had a couple items, did you not?
Really, just, just a couple of questions. Um I'm just wondering if we uh partner with the county when they get uh their ortho photos done every few years? Or if we simply use like Google Earth or something? Um we partner with them? Yeah, okay, cause it is, it's very good, ortho photos. Uh and.
Do they have a fly coming up that is gonna?
Sorry?
Do they have a fly coming up that's gonna update the photos, or?
Uh that I don't know, I'm assuming if we, if we uh partner with them, then they must let us know when they're, when they're gonna new, do a new bunch. I have no idea where in the rotation they are, to be honest with you. Yeah. Okay, worth looking into, I'm just thinking emergency management, uh it's, it's so good to have good ortho photos you're looking at.
So would that include, um you know how in the conference room we have the big picture there, would that include Elvira, that big huge map?
I would think that would be a piece of them.
That's quite old then, if we. Yeah? Yeah, they would give us and then we would do it, so that's what I'm saying, I don't think we've had them done in quite a few years then.
And they're very high resolution, I mean, they're, they are really good ortho photos. And my second question, um regards the, do, do we have a training policy for employees? That covers, for instance, um you know, a requirement if we're gonna pay for for training, that uh they stay with the organization for a certain length of time? Um
I don't see Alicia here, but um no, I don't believe that that is a policy. And most organizations um depends on the type of training, so yeah, if it was, you know, decide to send me off for fifteen thousand dollars and get my MBA or fifty thousand dollars, then 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 traditionally, or usually sign an agreement to give um uh somebody, guarantee somebody years of service, but um I don't believe that we have that here.
But if it's for like a certification for a water operator, then we, that's not a requirement, which would, which would make sense if it's a requirement like that.
It's usually only if it's, if it's contained within their operating budgets and it's part of their uh normal training exercise, and it's, I don't know, a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars, we don't, we don't, you wouldn't really wanna pursue that, but if it was a substantial piece of training, A, staff is away for for a little bit of time, and there's a significant investment from the organization, then that's something that we would look at uh as one offs, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's been my experience in the past, too. Um yeah, there needs to be a commitment there, if we're gonna make a commitment to them, they need to do the same for us, or else pay a pro-rated portion if they leave. Okay. Thank you.
That's all you had? Okay, um I do have a couple things here. Um I don't know if anybody knows anything about this, but um Minister Turtin is scheduled to be coming here on February twenty second at nine thirty AM, is that true, and what's, what's he coming for, and what was that request, and? Do we know? Um February twenty second at nine thirty. And how do we know that?
Uh thank you, Mary Dodd, through the rest of council. Um I believe this is uh through the MLA, so it's been set up already earlier, we at uh uh Community Services are aware, so Lola has been uh reaching out to see what the opportunities are, because normally, of course, when we have ministers coming out, uh then we inform and get uh, let's say, other opportunities for politicians, yes or no, to reach out as well, so this is something that had been started, uh if I'm correct, with uh our MLA, because that went through his office.
Okay, so this wasn't a request for us, cause typically, yeah, we would know that there's a minister coming to the community, why they're coming to the community, but we don't really know why he's coming, or what the request was, we do have a meeting with the MLA tomorrow, so maybe that can be put on as some of our questions, is what the intent was, what the discussion, who's leading it, and all of that then, unless there's a member of council that has more information? Nope? Okay, perfect, just wanted to, um I know that I'll be away, um Monica will be away, uh I Bill's gone, Colin is the deputy, so I haven't had a chance to ask if he'll be here. Um I'll ask him tomorrow in the meeting if he'll be around, um that was one, and then also um ribbon cutting for the new school on what date was that again? Uh twenty second again, that's why that's again the twenty second, at one thirty. Um the MLA will be cutting the ribbon uh in um place of the Minister of Education, so I can't remember who said they could make it there from council as well. Um I don't think, yeah.
On yet, but I could send you.
Okay, if you could, okay. Um and then, what did Colin respond? Okay, so Emilla and Rick could go, um and then were we required to say a few words? So would you be okay with saying a few words if you had to? We can get, we could get Jen um typically to help just say a couple words with, um if there's a uh part of the ribbon cutting, right, isn't that typically what we do if there was a little speech, so then you're not kind of just? Okay. I think it would just be, yeah, Jen could help work with us typically to do that if you're required to say a few words, so um yeah, if Nancy and Pam can send that to Rick, um Emilla's already responded, then we know we have representation, that's fantastic. Um and then the other thing was I had on here, is I don't know if everybody's seen in their inbox an invitation, um and I believe it's in March for the Poverty Simulator. Oh no, is it in March? Okay, in March, um to go, and I'm not sure, just a reminder to, it's a poverty um simulator, uh.
Um I I know just a little bit about it, uh so what it is, is it will give it.
Who's hosting it again?
Sure.
FCSS?
Probably, yeah.
Healthy Community Coalition?
And it's at the McCandie Center, so what it is, is they're looking for volunteers eighteen years of age and up.
Um no, I think they have the volunteers, this was just the invitation for council.
But but it's also, so you're sort of possibly volunteering to participate in it, so it's a study where, where you, you they give you an assignment, and you are unhoused person with hard time getting ID or groceries or whatever, and you have to go around and kinda try to figure it out, just to give you an idea of what it's like being unhoused and a little bit out of luck, I guess. So yeah, that that's kinda all I know, I already signed up for it.
You did, yeah, I did too, um just seeing in the email, it says to myself, Elvira, and then there's another person on there. Oh, okay, okay, so I think all of council, um there is a deadline, um if you wanna, or RSVP by February sixteenth for that. Um I think that's all I had for my notes, um anybody have anything else? No, okay, so that wraps up uh council-initiated items. Next up is our department reports, first up is Ms. Terry, Municipal Service Department Report.
Good afternoon, Madam Mary and members of council.
Good afternoon.
Uh so Public Works, uh snow removal of all priority routes was completed. Um staff are now working on alleys and service roads and gravel roadways, we did get some more snow over the weekend, we did not meet our five centimeter threshold on that event, so um they're just doing minor cleanup right now as well. On January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, one of our snow haulers had a mechanical malfunction of the hoist of his dump truck. This prevented the hoist of his dump truck from fully securing the box down in, or box in the down position. The driver failed to notice that this had occurred and continued to drive with the hoist up or in the upright position, causing the truck to catch an overhead power line, causing two power poles to fall over. Four discos responded, they did a fantastic job, they had the power back up in very little time, and um all damages are, are, I think, have been rectified at this time. Um staff are still working on sign assessments um around town, Christmas decorations have been removed. Lights along Fiftieth remain on, and the Christmas banners are still installed, we will be getting those down at a later date. Um staff are working on sidewalk condition assessments as well, so we can have better planning for budgets in the future. Arcs, staff have been working on icy locations along our walking trails and sidewalks. When the weather was nice, um during the day, and the temperatures dropped at night, it did create some icy locations that we had to to manage. Um they did have another snow event and had to go back to the beginning and and do snow removal again. With the warm weather, we've experienced, staff have struggled to keep the ice surfaces um in good condition. Um I do see that the temperatures are gonna start dropping in the evenings, so hopefully we can start building some of that ice back up, especially for the fire and ice event in the downtown core. Um hanging flower baskets have been ordered, um this allows our suppliers enough time to grow the flowers. Um first round of interviews have started for our summer staff positions as well this week. Utilities, um we had a water break occur on Forty Ninth Street in the alley behind Cobblestone on January twenty first, it was fixed, and there was no disruptions to service to residents. Annual calibrations of all analyzers, analyzing equipment at all of our facilities have been completed as per our approval. Um the water treatment plant, um twenty twenty four annual report has been reviewed and edits are underway. Um the wastewater annual report, first draft is currently under review. Um parts arrived at the water treatment plant for a chemical transfer pump, um staff are currently working on installing these parts. Total power will be on site to perform our first quarter maintenance on our emergency backup generator at the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant and raw water pump station on February sixth. Semi-annual water results um had came back to us, they were under review, we have confirmed that we have passed all parameters. Um landfill and engineering, Lichey reporting has been completed and is being reviewed by uh our third-party contractor that deals with all the analysis um on our sampling for those. Um twenty twenty four annual report first draft is almost complete for review, Metal Next is currently hauling out scrap metal from the landfill. We'll be able to tell you what those revenues looked like probably by mid-February. Um tires are being removed at the landfill, we're just kinda cleaning up, getting ready for um this year's drop-offs. Um engineering is working on completing two inspections for Fortis Alberta for salvage and install of transformers and a switcharm. And all other project updates have been reported to council through the project status reports attached to the agenda. I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much, any questions for Ms. Terry? No. Wow, right, thank you very much for your report. Next up is uh Community and Recreation Services Department, Mr. Hans von Flavren. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor, and through the chair to the rest of council, so a couple of highlights from the department report for the Community and Recreation Service Department. So first of all, of course, ECDC, um it's going very well over there, it's nice to have a little bit of life in the building over there, they're gonna miss us when the kids are moving out of that building, it's just something that, of course, we are preparing. So it goes well with the renovations in the location, and we are planning on the return already. Uh no date set yet, but it looks, everything is on schedule. For the FCSS, yeah, the first and the third bullet point, uh just, that's what it is, uh income tax program, paying your bills comes up, so uh people can reach out, of course, when they wanna utilize that uh program. Uh and we give some information as noted in there as well, so to take the opportunity to uh take those services or get the information as required. For the Omniplex, Live Barn, uh mentioned there, and I can tell you, it's at the moment live, so I look over there as well, thank you. The Communications Department, it helps out as well, and uh we are pushing out the information right now. How this works is a prescription service that you can see our two ice ring services, surf processes. Um and when you are a member of this uh streaming service, so that's uh awesome, and it gives everybody that's uh, let's say remotely, uh the opportunity to see maybe somebody play, the kids play and practice uh on the ice surfaces. And the big thing that we are uh supporting as well is our uh curling ring. Uh two items that are coming in, and we mentioned that earlier, so with the U twenty provincials, uh it is a big thing, so for this organization to help them out, it's thrown at their feet, and they uh accepted that challenge to host this uh, the short term, and to make it uh happen fair, pretty fast in the beginning of uh March, March five to ten. Uh but it's gonna be awesome to see sixteen teams coming from uh out of town, uh to be here for multiple days uh in town to challenge for their uh championship for Alberta. The whole camp, uh the Ricochet Oil Corp Aquatic Center, so our pool, uh our team that we have ourselves in the program of the JLC, the Junior Lifeguard Club, uh they placed fourth, so they're on track, of course, to do another uh great season. And yeah, when you are fourth, and we've seen in the past, of course, first and second place is coming up, but bigger teams competing, and our smaller uh team has a hard time, of course, when there's a huge uh competition in the, bigger teams that uh take the first places, fourth is awesome. And this morning, we also had a meeting with our uh team, the Chendos and the Poli Partners, uh to make sure that we are still on track with the items and dates on it to be completed in our facility, and making sure that everything works. Now we are taking over, of course, the building completely ourselves. For Community Services, the first bullet item over there talks about dollars, that's is our uh Recreation Fee Assistance Program, just to make you aware of the fact that uh we've already seen a good uptake on that in the first month of the year, uh with a ten thousand dollar budget, uh we hand that out according to our criteria that we uh are having in place. We will see that depleted before we even reach, uh let's say, the half-year point. Um it's just something that we will uh take a look at, of course, uh maybe come up with uh recommendations and make sure that uh this program that has a lot of uptake uh is sustainable maybe for the future as well, but yeah, we are handing out money to support people to be part of uh recreation facilities. And the recreation facilities and all the other facilities we conquered and survived the cold snap, so um we saw that, of course, already happening, and uh as we know, the ECDC location, it's uh well underway to be repaired, as well as la- our last and all the other items we're taking care of. If there's any questions.
Thank you very much for your report, Counselor Valas.
Thank you, when did Live Barn go live?
Today.
Oh, okay, cause I know on the weekend they tried it.
That's right, yeah, no, it was not live in the weekend yet, it was installed, but now it's live, today it's launched.
Okay, thank you, also in regards to the indoor rodeo, the Great Valley Tourism Hospital Hospitality Association are looking at hiring the events coordinator. So we're trying to make it a week of rodeo action uh by hiring our events coordinator, that one person can go out and hopefully organize and get the merchants and get everybody involved and make it a successful week, so uh that's encouraging as well. And then the third thing, you said facility asbestos report, uh do we have facilities with asbestos?
Thank you for that question, and yes, we do have facilities, that's an uh, let's say, a running, ongoing report. Every year, you report back on. Every year you report back on the facilities that we have. So certain facilities have maybe some plaster or still in the walls. We have throughout town, of course, older facilities. So it's a report that we have annually, not new asbestos or new items, but just the reporting on, it's still there, hasn't been touched, it's still concealed. We know about it.
As soon as you open it up, then you have to do something about it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just a comment. I bet you Kundi and the team is going to miss all the little, little ones running around the ECDC. I, I bet that it brought some life down there and excitement. It's usually pretty quiet down there, so you've probably enjoyed the time with everybody down there. And I know that the team's probably really enjoyed just the different building and, and everything like that. So nice that we were able to accommodate and a little bit sad that they're going to change, but it's kind of like a big field trip for everybody. Now they go back to the other building. So great job again on the team for the move, and I'm sure they'll do a fantastic job moving back. So with that being said, the move, once that comes from the CETC back to the ECDC building, will that be done over the weekend or after hours? Like, or do we have to shut down a day or something to do that?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So that's what we are looking into right now in the planning for that. So most likely it will have a small interruption again because it's really multiple days, of course, packing up, making sure everything is there and to get to, let's say, operations. But we are trying to, of course, make that as minimal as possible, utilizing a weekend, for instance, yeah.
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you very much for your report. Next up, we have Mr. Nam Birai doing the 11.3 Growth Services Department report. I think I get really nervous when I'm about to say it, so then I mess it up.
No, thank you. For the Growth Services Department report, starting with economic development. So we are making headway with the labor market industry gap analysis and education needs assessment study with KPMG. We are right now at the recommendation stage and final assessment of the deliverables. Next is the Rural North Stream Program. So that's going really well. I mean, there's a lot of interest, and it seems that businesses are still actively applying for positions. And so, I mean, from the time we wrote this report to now, we receive many more applications, which is great. On the energy side of things, with some great news, we did hear from Fortis Alberta that they were successful in their applications through the Emissions Reduction Alberta Grant for additional electric vehicle charging stations in Drayton Valley. And so we're just talking to them and trying to figure out what their plan is when it comes to that and site selection and whatnot. On the education side, as you would note earlier, we did finalize the MOU with Campus Alberta and just brought it in for discussion as well, while looking at having some conversations with the Community Learning Association and signing some sort of agreement with them, given all the synergies that we have with each other. Apart from that, we have been doing quite a bit of research into finding alternative funding options for students. And we're actually quite surprised to find quite a bit of funding for Healthcare Aid Academy. You know, there's some great bursaries out there, I think paying up to $9,000 for, for healthcare aid, which almost completely covers the entire cost for them. And as well, we found some loan forgiveness programs through the financial, through the federal government for registered nurses and licensed practical nurses. Some things that we think would just be useful to be mindful of moving forward. Apart from that, just a few audits as well on the education website and just changing a few bit of information, just correcting some things. And that pretty much covers this department update.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Gomana.
Thank you. No, not a question. It's a follow-up question, but I just wanted to say kudos to you for Campus Alberta MOU. That's excellent first step, and I think we need to do more working with them to bring more educational opportunities to our community. And also, it's encouraging to see how well we are doing with renewal stream. That's excellent that we have already 168 applications. Just wondering, any update about the Rural Entrepreneurial Stream though?
So three-year worship to Councilor Gomana. For the Rural Entrepreneurial Stream, I believe we discussed it last time during a council meeting, and, you know, so, you know, we have done research into it to see the viability for the program. And I guess it's more or less just comes down to seeing if that's the direction council wants to go with it. But on our end, we have done research into it, and we can certainly bring that up for discussion if that's what you'd want.
Yeah, I would really like that. Thank you, thank you for that.
So Kundi, have we heard anything in regards to the MELT program? Any further? I know that we kind of just kept getting the October, November, New Year, January. So have we heard any more on that?
Yes, so we actually had Corinne reach out to them. And so they actually still are in the pilot stage in Slave Lake, I believe. And so we're basically just waiting to see how the pilot goes. And based on, you know, it going well or not, that's when they were looking to at least have a few discussions here in Drayton Valley. But for right now, it's really out of our hands. We're just waiting on them to let us know if it's something that they want to approach us with.
I wonder if there's a way that we couldn't push them. I know that this has been ongoing conversations for a couple of years, and my understanding was that this was a go. So we had gone out and we're speaking to businesses within the community, and they were quite excited and, you know, were willing to do letters of support, to say that this is an urgency, that we have a lack of, you know, class one drivers and that this is, this is needed. So, I mean, and that's kind of where the communication was. So now it's a bit disappointing to hear that, you know, they're in the pilot and, and they're not quite sure. So I don't know if there's anything that maybe if we could, you know, get letters of support from the businesses that are in need of this program, if that would help them, you know, with seeing that there's an urgency here, or if there's just a matter of just waiting and riding it out.
Yeah, I mean, certainly wouldn't hurt, I guess, to keep inquiring. We did try to even ask to preemptively do a few things.
Yeah.
In helping them onboard to Drayton. But even then, you know, they said that it's just a matter of just waiting and seeing for them and making a, you know, educated decision on their behalf, so.
Okay. And then also, where are we with registration for the RN program with University of Calgary? Are we full? Are we still on track for, I guess it's September for that program to be started?
Yeah, so through two-year worship. So in the last meeting that we had with them, they told us that they received around 45 applications already.
Wow.
Yeah, so from that time that they came last year to present, I think they were around 21 to now 45, it seems. There's a lot of interest. And so in regards to having an agreement with them, we did send them quite a few, quite a bit of information that they were looking for. And so right now, they're just in the process of talking to their lawyer and trying to figure out certain terms to send back to us. And so we're just waiting on them, but as well just communicating when we can.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much for your report. Next up is council reports. Councilor Evans, did you have anything to add to your report? Or if you want to talk about it? No? Okay, Councilor Sheriffs? No? Councilor Ballas? Okay, and Councilor Colin left. Councilor Gomana has gone. I did have, yeah, I don't know. And everything. Just in addition to mine, joint council session earlier in the week and an additional MLA meeting that I had had as well yesterday. Otherwise, everything is outlined in my report. And with that, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept for information the department reports and the council reports as information? Councilor Sheriff, thank you very much for that. And next up is information items. First up is project status reports. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions in regards to any specific projects and how we're tracking, or if we're good. I know that it looks like quite a bit of work went into putting together this monthly status report, so thank you very much for that. It's nice to see, we can see how our projects are tracking and where we're at. And it's a little bit different than we've seen in the past, where we just kind of had it, I guess, in a chart and just the status. So this is nice that we see the accomplishments, we see the plans for the next period, the issues, the actions, you know, and any age or any issues as well as project health meter. So thank you for doing that. I think this helps understand the projects a little bit more. I'll go to Councilor Gomana first for questions in regards to the project status report.
Thank you, yes. No, thank you for that. I agree with your comments. It's great to have this, you know, it's easy to understand, easy to read. My only question was that, you know, for the project health meter, there's one with the bar, and then there's one with X. So is there a difference, or is there, no?
No, there's no difference. So the X means it's on track, and I'm looking at the green bar, and it indicates on track. So this is our first, our first time using this tool. So as we move forward, you'll see it a little bit more standardized.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ballas, did you have a question?
Yeah, in regards to the CETC landscaping concept, you sent out RFPs, is that? Just three quotes? Did you use our local Sephora?
So it was, do we have a local firm that has landscape architects?
I'm not sure all what they have, but I've seen their work, and they've done excellent work locally, so I'm not sure what resources they do have, but it wouldn't hurt to check them out.
There you go.
Did you have another question, Phil?
When, I thought they're looking at one here where I thought a grant was allocated, and we came in below budget or something like that, seem to find it right now. But if a grant's allocated, for example, for beautification, and you're under that grant budget, can that money be allotted to, say, like landscaping or something? No?
The one you're talking about is for the trail upgrades?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, so I did talk to them about, like, what we could do for a scope change on that. And unfortunately, we're really limited on our options. So I'll be bringing a report to you guys to kind of discuss what our next, next move should be and see if you guys agree at that point. But we came in significantly under budget on it, so that means we still have quite a bit of grant funding allowed in there. And I don't know if we necessarily want to lose that grant funding or just want to continue with some trails throughout the community, but it's a very hard grant to get. So when I did talk to the grant holders, it's, it's a very difficult grant, and there's limitations on what we can do and how we can re-scope the work to utilize all the grant funding.
Just a good answer. Just even with our own budgets, Councilor Ballas, if, if we finished a project and we had an extra, we finished under budget, we can't just apply that to another one that has to go through council and be approved by council.
Any other questions on the project tracking sheet? Councilor Evans?
Just the CCAN container. Did we ever get a chance to have a look at what's, what keeps rolling through the auction? They've been 7,000 to 8,000. I realize there's additional costs there, but that seems like, from what I've seen, pretty reasonable. If it meets your needs, though.
Yeah, no, we've been, we, we established a committee with a bunch of firefighters that are looking at the auctions to, to see if there's one that will suit our needs. So we are paying close attention to that, see if we can get one for cheap. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, we're looking at those. Yep, absolutely. We're going, we're on it. Yep.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I like even how in here, how you've got the big completed. That's kind of just a woo-hoo, looking through that. There is one here, the snow dump, and I see that it's in the danger. So do you want to speak to, is that like a, something, or does that danger just speak to, I guess, the major project issues? Is that why it gets marked in the danger? Yeah? And how do we, how do we get out of the danger and in more on track or ahead, or do we not?
It's more in a danger zone just because it is a regulatory.
Oh, okay.
Item that, that kind of has been ongoing for many, many years and without any movement. So.
That's why it's there?
Yeah, just because of the amount of time that it's been in budget, that nothing's been done with it. So I put it there, and hopefully I can move it out of that danger zone.
Okay.
Here in the near future.
Okay. And then the approved budget, how long has it been in here? Like this project?
I, I know for sure 2022, I believe. So it was the same year as the, or actually, it might have been 2021, actually.
2021?
Yeah.
And do we feel confident there's a budget of $150,000 allocated? Do we feel that, because it's been there for a while, and there is a danger that maybe this project just won't go through, or there's a suggestion to move it to a different location, or this could cost more money, less money, or?
It depends on the environmental assessment that we have to get completed. We did have one done, but we have to do some extra ground monitoring. So that'll be our next step. And then to kind of get our recommendations and estimated costs on what it's going to look like to, to get it where it needs to be.
And when are we expecting that, uh, environmental assessment to be completed? I just drew like.
That's undetermined right now. So I did want to talk to the consulting company that did the original assessment and kind of figure out a path forward from there. But I'll update in the project statuses for you guys to kind of show you what, where we're going with it.
Okay. And then just one last question. Is there a risk of fines or anything that could be associated with this?
Not at this time, no, no.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, if there's no other questions on the project tracking list, thank you very much again for changing of how this is reported. It looks great, and we look forward to seeing this come and asking questions when we need. Next up, we have a few other information items. 14.2 municipal federal agreements, 14.3 Drayton Valley Quarter III municipal crime stats, 14.4 is the letters to the mayor and the letters of support for e-venture funding request. Is there a member of council that would like to accept these as information? Councilor Gomana, thank you very much. And I will adjourn the meeting at 3:29 PM.